To the flag, we the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening on this really, really cold night for our work session, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And we have a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. We just need to jump down to a resolution to appoint Jeffrey Ladue, and then we will possibly go right through to the ceremony. So without any further ado, for Resolution twenty-five zero zero two eight. To appoint Jeffrey Ladue to the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of former member Richard Bubutowski until April second, twenty twenty-nine. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Motion, Donna, second, let's see. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Motion passes. Zero with one absent. Okay, now Christine, if you don't mind, we could proceed. Jeff, we are not coming up. Thank you.
Please put your right hand in the air after me. I, Jeffrey Ladue.
I, Jeffrey Ladue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of planning and zoning board member.
Of planning and zoning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Chair Newlon. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Taking it out. Appreciate it very much. Say hello.
Welcome.
Alright, to start would be a public comment on any agenda items. Anyone has any questions? Okay, if not, we'll move right into into our announcements and discussions. So first thing on on that list is the sewer plant group project has been completed, done, signed off, warranties are in place. Couple of punch items that need to be completed if it when it warms up a little bit. There's some debris that was frozen to the ground and a down pipe that needed to be extended. And a chimney cap that needs to be replaced. So very small items that need to be done. Just waiting for the ground to thaw a little bit, so we'll just, these things can be done internally now. The rooms have been going through repairs and getting ready to install new ceiling tiles. And we did some work on the lighting that was in there that's been there since probably over twenty-five years. And we've installed some LED lighting to take advantage of some reeves from O and R that we'll be applying for. So that is completed. Next is a status update. I'll turn this over to, do you want this one? You have it, okay. Basically, the Orange County acceptance of the comprehensive plan adoption of twenty twenty-four. Turn that over to Donna.
Okay, so we received back from the county recently a letter with a huge thumbs up commending us on our ability for having a well-balanced, unique plan. Want me to read the letter?
Yeah, please.
Okay, this is coming from the Department of Planning, Commissioner of Planning in Orange County. The department has received the comprehensive plan mentioned above and has found no evidence that its approval would result in significant inner municipal or county-wide impacts. Overall, the proposed comprehensive plan is well-written and well-balanced. It strives to retain the village's unique character and heritage while providing opportunities for infill development and growth. We appreciate the village's effort to protect environmental resources, preserve open space, support a diversity of housing options for all residents, revitalize downtown, and address many other issues. We also appreciate the village's stated support of the county's proposed Scream of Rail Trail. So I'm very pleased and proud. It's been two years of hard work from that committee and the board.
Yeah, I think we should probably send a copy on to the Comprehensive Plan Committee itself.
You guys received this?
And did you get a copy of it by chance?
I will follow it to.
Okay, well, we'll follow up on it to make sure you're all aware of it because it's really kudos to you and everybody that was a part of that committee and put all that time and effort in over a really lengthy period of time. So it's a good, it's a really nice letter.
Are we doing the update now or?
Yeah, you can actually, yeah. Yeah, you want to do the update or?
Sure.
Yep, fine.
Okay, so just a status report. Since the last meeting, the public hearing for the Comprehensive Committee, some of you in the team were here. There was a lot of public comment. They went back to the back room, resumed, and they recommended the plan to the village board. So it's now in the village board's hands. We received an update with all those public comments and a request from a landowner who had wanted us to meet with him and his team regarding a large parcel for development. The mayor and I had done that. We received an updated engineering report from the owner and forwarded that on to the comp committee for their review as long as well as all those other public comments. So it was a concise email for them to review and possibly come back with any further comments regarding them. And it was also addressed and forwarded to the village board committee. So at this point, tonight, actually, we will be declaring ourselves as lead agency for the comprehensive plan. The county only received to date the comp plan, not the zoning piece. So about the end of this week, early next week, we should receive back from our planner the draft zoning. That has been a work in progress by our board with the planner for about a year. So our eyes were on it, building departments' eyes were on it. We made our comments. She's doing those edits. And she'll come back to us, like I said, by the end of this week, early next week. So that brings us towards the end of February. Once we receive that, we are requesting seven to fourteen days for us to review it one last time. Building department will as well. By on or around March seventeenth, our planner should have completed the environmental assessment form, also known as the EAF, which is a requirement procedural. That will get submitted on or about early April. There will be a public hearing for both the comprehensive and the zoning piece. One public hearing held by the village board. Right now, we have a tentative date of April seventh, but that's not in stone yet. By mid-April, the CGR should be adopted. And then the last step would be the filing of the local law. And the end date for that is, we're shooting for the end of April. So we're right where we hoped to be. And that's about all we have. Unless anybody has questions.
Thank you, Donna. Great report. And once again, the planning piece with Bonnie and the board. It's a real good team effort, I think, amongst all. And, you know, the positive feedback from the Orange County planning, I think, is just a good indicator of, again, all the hard work that was put in. And we're just about there. So that's really, really good news at the end of the day. So, thank you. Next on the list was an update on the short-term rentals. So continue with that.
I reached out to several different municipalities. I didn't get through back from all of them, but one of them that stood out was Clarkstown, beyond Rockland. We were kind of using Clarkstown as a model for long-term rentals. So we thought we'd jab to them for their short-term rentals. We'd noticed that they had it in place at one point, and then they didn't. So I was just curious as to why. I spoke with the building inspector and apparently, I'm trying to think of the year here. It was a couple of years back, I believe. They had a large structure, short-term rental, that was being rented out and used for shooting a rap video. Apparently, there were three guys that were excluded from this and decided to take some guns and shoot up the house. So that's not the reason they stopped it. That was just the last straw. So when I asked them, if that didn't happen, where would you be? They said they would have still decided not to move forward with the short-term rentals. Some of the reasons were it required a lot more PD to patrol. It was very hard to keep a grip on compliance. There were more fire department calls. They were getting resident complaints from parking on the lawns, not just one or two cars, up to a dozen. Noise ordinances were not in compliance. People were using it to have major parties. Residents were not happy. There was a greater concern for safety. Coals were even being rented by the hour, not just the day. And so I asked them, I was curious also about revenue, because that's a big piece of it. And this really surprised me. They charged two hundred and fifty dollars for two years. So there was not much revenue going on as well.
I find this to be a core example of a short-term rental policy.
They're not the only ones I reached out to.
A two hundred dollar a year, I would jump on that in a heartbeat. It's a percentage of your stay, every stay. That's the way these platforms work. There's no flat rate for the year. Maybe a business license to the village, but not occupancy tax is a percentage of your gross of rentals. That's how you have that side of the village that generates money. That example that you're getting, this whole example, that policy sounds absurd to me. That has nothing to do with short-term rental. That's, that's, you're not even allowed to have parties within Airbnbs, VRBOs. They don't even allow that.
They don't allow it, but they were happy to.
Then they're banned from the platform. That's it. That's a piss poor example. I'm sorry. I gave you the example of that town that actually charges an occupancy tax.
They charge a certain amount of town tax.
How do you fly? That's, that's, to say that you're not going to generate revenue, that's, that's not factual. I'm sorry.
Well, I think she's done reporting yet, so why don't we let her finish?
I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to them. And you were talking to me.
Please.
There are very few municipalities in the county that are doing short-term rentals. So the ones that I found that were, they didn't get back to me.
We're already doing short-term rentals within the village.
Sorry?
There's already short-term rentals within the village. There's short-term rentals within this village right now.
Well, yeah, but that's just it.
A lot of, not just one or two, a lot. And they're currently rented every week. I know houses that are turning and burning all week, every week, every month.
And I'm not, I'm not denying that.
And that's money generating for the village.
How do you, how do you track and keep track of all the rentals? Say there's a hundred rentals. How do you keep track of all those rentals?
As who? A homeowner or?
No, as, as the village who is expecting tax revenues. And you, as a good citizen, renting your house fifty-two weeks out of the year.
I'm going to answer your question.
How do you do it?
When you pass the law and you get the law in the books, you could have Airbnb or VRBO, they'll see that law that's on the books. They will collect that tax immediately off that rental and cash that, that tax is passed on to the village. I do it in every one of my towns that I'm in. I pay that town tax, I pay the village tax. There's a county occupancy tax. It all gets passed through to you guys.
Okay. That's good info. We're not sitting here putting a stake into its heart at this point.
Well, after that statement of all the crime, the rap video, that one example, the rap video, the standing, the shooting.
With or without, with or without this law, I probably, last year, received five phone calls for very large parties and neighbors that were very upset. So.
We have that now without a rental.
Yes.
Exactly, exactly. So, but what, what happens when I get the complaint from, you know, it's supposed to be, you know, a family of six turns out to be a party of fifty to fifty-five. It's loud, music all night long, and then what? Then we have to.
And we have ordinance within the village that we don't.
Right. And that's, that's the other side of this coin now. We, we know, and we hope it wouldn't happen that frequently. Problem is here is that we're very condensed, right? We're two and a half square miles, very tight residencies, right? Everybody's close. And we just don't want that. And listen, we could, we could move in that direction with all the right things. If it gets out of control, then we pull back like other communities. Because at the end of the day, the revenue, whatever it might be, and we still need to then figure that out and taking that suggestion that you just gave, is find out from these different municipalities, what is their tax revenue approximately? But we don't want this to be a thing where, where the building department is constantly chasing things. The police department is constantly running after parties and all this disruption. So, and we don't want, obviously, the neighbors that are living next to these properties to be going through this. If it's one of those properties that they constantly want to rent.
Tom, it's already happening now. Do we have any issues now? Are we getting a rap video getting filmed in houses? Here, here.
Well, we did.
Yes, we did.
And we had, and we had a very large one up off of Canterbury.
Regular homeowners, you know, I give parties all summer long, you know, when you cast the drive, these are regular homeowners. You know, the single out, just a short-term rental. I'm telling you, we're missing out on revenue. We talked about it last meeting, ways to generate revenue. This is a prime example of generate revenue. We have no revenue generating function within this village.
And like we said, Vinnie, we're looking into it. We just want to report that to you, what we've found so far. Okay?
Goshen expressed similar to me. They're considering it. They're not sure how it's going to go over. They also acknowledge that it's not widely, not widely used practice in, in the county. And Clarkstown also explained, like, it just kind of didn't make sense for them. They said, and why in this area, it's typically.
It's used within the county because there is a county occupancy tax.
Sorry?
You rent on short-term rentals. You're paying a county occupancy tax. There's already a county occupancy tax.
But what I'm saying is.
So to say it's not being used within the county.
There are more municipalities not doing them than are. It's not widely accepted for those reasons I mentioned earlier. Goshen expressed the same, similar, similar concerns. They're, again, putting it out there, right? What do the residents want? What do the residents want? You know, maybe we'll have a public hearing, you know, special meeting and.
It's still in limbo in the state. The state has looked at this, to the best of my knowledge. It has not made it through legislation yet for the governor to sign off, and she has not indicated one way or another she will sign it.
What law is that?
They're trying to, at one point, the state was looking to make a short-term rental law statewide.
Right, but there's already a law on the books for occupancy tax within the county. We can do it. It's not like there's no law on the books.
Okay.
Sure.
Just to back them up, there's our places where you rented, if the cops get called or anything happens, the people are fined and have to pay a fee to the police department and the village. Or the time that's put into, that we respond to. So you might want to add that to it. You have a party and something goes wrong. You aren't responsible for the PD, the FD, whoever. Because this is not your personal home. This is a rental. And you're putting the burden on the village people.
Right. Yeah. I mean, the laws, I looked at a town of Hamilton, totally different situation because it's really a college town, has actually two colleges there and a, or, and a hospital. And they had a lot of people coming in there because of schools. And a lot of people were going in and buying the homes. So, and then turning around and then renting them. So they were finding out most, a lot of the people that were moving into town or the homeowners were actually out-of-town people, not people that were buying it to live there. So they created their short-term rental to kind of slow that process down and make it where they want people to live there. So it's a different scenario. Their, their fee was two hundred dollars a year. It was probably just a, a application-type fee. And she didn't know really much about the taxes that were being collected. And it sounded like maybe they're not even collecting the tax. So we just want to report to you what we've found so far. The ball is still moving. We're still going to check it out. You gave some good information, Vinnie. We're going to use that.
Orange County currently imposes five percent occupancy tax on every rental, short-term rental. That's every time if I vote for the weekend, five percent of that, that total is going to Orange County. They're getting that money. You guys impose the same five percent, if not more. I pay seventeen percent for one of my towns.
There are also places where if you don't live in it, you pay a higher tax because it's a rental. I had a place in Florida, I paid, played non-homestay tax, which was doubled, maybe almost two and a half times what a resident was paying.
Right.
Because they assumed I was renting it out, which I wasn't. They want their money, they deserve their money. Non-occupancy tax might be one of them.
It would be interesting to find out a consensus on what the residents would want. I mean, since the majority of this village.
The majority of the residents are taxes.
Problem is, they're here. The rentals are here. The rentals are all over the place.
I understand.
So you might as well start.
But if we put it out there to the residents, would they want this or not want this?
Don't want the rentals or the taxes?
The short-term rentals.
Oh.
So how do you go about it? The ones are already here. You got so many within the town already. They're, they're all over the place. Stone Ridge is full of them, completely surrounded. Just go on the app and look. Put in Washington, though, and you will see all the houses that are for rent. Short-term rentals. This, and, and they're turning and burning every three days. There's new people in there.
And with that app, how do you know if they're short-term or long-term?
Because before you have one of them.
You're talking about Airbnb?
Airbnb, VRBO, Hookey. There's so many apps out there. They're, they're on there.
Okay. More work to do. Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
I hear back from the other municipalities, so we can report again.
Yeah. And let's, when we do speak to them, if they do call us back or whatever, let's specifically ask about their, if they are collecting the sales tax.
Occupancy tax.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you. Alrighty. Next is an item from Orange County. We received some correspondence regarding this niche record management system, the law enforcement. I think we put this on the website for everybody to review, but apparently the county has been working with some other towns and cities on, as probably the project team of Middletown, Town of Warwick, Village of Monroe. And I think that might be, maybe another one. But at the end of the day, these municipalities have been working with the niche record management. And they basically just launched the system out to these particular municipalities. Our department has been going for the training. And what this system is supposed to be doing is, I'll just read this from, from the post that they put out there. But it replaces outdated law enforcement systems that no longer support with a modern integrated platform hosted by Orange County System. Eliminate, eliminates data silos, provides real-time access to critical information, enhances officers' response and capabilities. So all in all, rather than everybody having their own databases, now it's going to be shared under one database. And it's also cumulative, working with the nine-one-one computer aid dispatch system. They describe it as a single pane of glass for all Orange County municipalities, law enforcement agencies to access and share that vital information. So it'll be more real-time. They want to say it's faster incident responses, enhanced crime prevention, streamlined investigation, stronger community policing, greater accountability, and last but not least, the increased officers' awareness, giving them greater visibility into criminal activity. Of course, municipalities, jurisdiction enables the aggregate perspective. And with this, along with, and I'm sure everybody's seen them driving around, but the camera systems that are going up all over the place, not only plate readers, but all of the video that you see. You know, it's, it's really a collaborative effort and will definitely be helping all of our law enforcement's officers, of course, in Orange County. So it would be a great, great implementation as we get there. So again, our, our department, Chris Martin, has been attending the trains for a couple of months. And we're just waiting in line. And I'll check in with the chief to see when potentially we will be going on the system. Come on that. Next was just an update on auditors' costs. And we've been dealing with the deficit financing between all the accounting firms. Nothing from the state. We don't get billed from the state. They take enough of our money. But between PKF and BST, we're in the neighborhood right now of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we've paid. We have finished the ARFs, which is the yearly reporting that's done in-house. And we submit that information to AFR?
Annual Financial.
Right, annual financial, annual financial reporting. And so we're up to date, up to twenty-four with that information. That's really good. We have a couple of items less, less on, left on the twenty-three budget. And, which is twenty-three, twenty-four, or actually twenty-three, twenty-four budget audit has begun. And, you know, more to come on, on that. But just want to give you a snapshot on the amount of money that has been spent to date. And also recently, Orange County has passed a veterans' tax exemption. Yes. So they have raised it, and I was just on the phone with one of the legislators, trying to get some more information. Because I had a conversation with Vinnie because he was doing some follow-up based on seeing this post, I guess, or maybe you knew about it previously. But, you know, where it stands in essence, if you're a veteran, what you can do. If you're already a veteran in this program, they're really just saying there's nothing you need to do. But if you're, if you're not, then you need to be eligible and you need to reach out to the assessor in the town of Blooming Grove. And once that's done, you don't necessarily need to apply again according to this information. The deadline for the applications for the communities, if you're filling them out, is March first. So I would double-check again with the town assessor. That number is eight four five four nine six five two two three. And I believe his option is six. That will get you to the town assessor's location.
Beth doesn't know that. You need your DD two fourteen to apply for the eighth exemption.
Okay. Thank you. So there is some more information. Vinnie had mentioned that they have to, that the county had to pass a local law.
That resolution, that resolution that they had.
Yeah.
Was supposed to share the resolution, but they made it a law.
Okay.
They should have a public hearing. So they voted on it and they relied there for the fact that it was a public hearing.
Okay.
That resolution was just to raise the caps.
Right.
Of the exemption, right? Because the way the caps work and the equalization rate and da-da-da-da.
Right.
So they're going to have a public hearing next month.
Okay, so next month. So probably then this law won't be in effect.
The law's already there.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as changing the percentage?
Yeah.
That increase probably won't be until next March.
Regardless, what, even if Orange County, if it passes and it gets put into place in Blooming Grove, that would be the same thing.
Exactly. Yeah, and so would the village. Similar to what we did to the fire department exemption.
I'm going to start it now.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Sorry. So if you do have any questions, please reach out to the assessor or give our office a call. We'll help you out wherever we can. Uh, so if you do have any questions, please reach out to the assessor or give our office a call, we'll help you out wherever we can. Um, next item is the... So we have, uh, for the veterans, we received, um, the county is sponsoring a free movie night for veterans. It will be in Monroe. Um, it's Wednesday, March 5th at 1:00 PM or 6:00 PM. There's two showings and it'd be, I guess they call it the flagship premium cinema in Monroe, it's down by the lakes. If you're interested to reserve and, and for yourself and a guest, you can call 845-291-2470. And this information is on our website as well. For your information. Do you have any other announcements or anything else you'd like to mention? Alright, next we'll just move into the resolutions. Uh, let's see, the first one we have completed, the second one is, uh, 250029, authorized issuance of facilities use request form to Kiwanis Club of Washingtonville for a small group cleanup of trash along the roads. Newcastle to Stone Ridge Developments to be held on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:30 AM till 2:00 PM. They have a motion?
Motion.
Second, Steve. Any questions, comments? And this is the same, same format, same thing that they've been doing all along, their insurance forms are in here as well. So everything is satisfactory. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion 2301. Thank you very much. Uh, next is Resolution 250030, to appoint the village board as lead agency regarding seeker. State Environmental Quality Review Act, for their comprehensive plan process. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, Steve. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 301, absent. Um, yes, I do. It wasn't on that one, man, it's just... Can I have a little, yeah? Yes, alright, yes, yes, yes. No, this is the one. Thank you. No, since you have it in front of you, you don't need to read it out loud.
Okay.
Uh, next is Resolution 250031, to authorize the issuance of a public assembly permit for the hook and ladder for a St. Patrick's family festival to be held on Sunday, March 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM behind the hook and ladder, uh, parking lot area. Um, you have a motion? I have a motion, so we can get to discussion.
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, discussion. So this is the first time event, I'll just, I'll just start, I guess, and anybody can bring anything into, whatever. Um, so it's a family event, there's, uh, really just kids' activities. The village parking lot, um, would be closed. The, all the businesses around the parking lot have been advised, uh, a week or so ago. Everybody, no complaints, everybody's okay with it. Um, there'll be vendor, a couple of vendor trucks. Um, one is, um, one that's been all over the place, putting in most of our events, is Cousins Maine Lobster and then there's Fat Boy's, uh, poo truck. Um, the Hook will be doing more than likely, I would imagine, corned beef and cabbage, um, and serving out into their kind of back area, which has been roped off. And they will be responsible for security, people walking around, making sure everything's okay. They'll be also taking care of the garbage cans. Uh, porta-potties will be, uh, delivered, there'll be two, to offload any, you know, traffic and so forth going into their, um, into their car area. Uh, maize field will be used for parking and they already have maize, or the town of Blooming Grove's permission to utilize that. Um, we are waiting on their insurance forms and she said she'll probably have all of those by tomorrow, she will drop them off. Uh, let's see, the police have been notified, obviously, Monell and, and ambulance court. There is no plan of having anybody on site. Uh, there'll be no overtime from our police department. Uh, they'll be stopping by, you know, on a timely basis, just to check in and make sure everything is okay. Um, there'll be no drinking in the village parking lot. And, let's see, what else? And the parking area for night pack and, um, basin bubbles will be utilized as part of the area for this, uh, event as well. Um, let's see if there's anything else. The village, meaning us, would be responsible, will give them more of the red canisters, the garbage cans. And again, the, uh, facilitators of this, meaning the hook and ladder, will be emptying the garbage cans, piling, piling it up and then we can pick the stuff up on Monday, if his, if his dumpster is full. Again, this is a first-time event and, um, you know, their, the plan is just to have a family kid activity for St. Patrick's Day. So it's, um, that's it. And wish it from the board. Go ahead.
You mentioned security. What's specific? What type of security? Um, obviously it's a big party, right?
Well, yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of joint.
Not in the parking lot, I don't know how you're gonna stop that.
I don't know how you're gonna stop it.
In general.
Well, they got, well, that's somebody, they'll have people, listen, they're responsible to make sure that nobody's in the parking lot. This is a, more of a family thing, right? It, they're gonna have kids' games, they're gonna do all that kind of stuff. So I really don't think, you know, if they wanted to have a bash, it'd be titled a bash, but it's supposed to be a family thing, so.
See, community out of control.
You know, you get, we gotta watch. Well, if I had to use the word, downstairs, right, the old term. They'll have guys in t-shirts, walking around to make sure that everybody stays in the corral with, with their food and stuff. And the rest of the people will be in the parking lot area. And there'll be barri, barricades, so no traffic can enter in through the banks, so that everything is safe. Obviously in the beginning, they'll be able to, similar to Whoville, similar to Wichitaville, it's the same thing. And it is on Sunday, not, not Saturday. Um, it kind of popped up earlier in the day. Um, but it is, it's Sunday. And if we get all the forms tomorrow, you know, the resolution would be pending all of that before the event. And if they don't, if it wasn't being delivered, then the event doesn't happen. Yeah, Paul?
This is, this is a great example, a gentleman that sat, the resident that sat in the back of the room at the last meeting. How much are we charging them? This is where you make money. Charging $500 bucks.
Well, that is one of the conversations we're having. Um, we're not, we haven't definitively made a decision yet, but we are talking about it. And we, we're having a meeting next week to talk about it, bring in some of our, uh, businesses that have planned events so that we can get their angle and our angle and see, you know, what we can do. Um, like a lot of these places of, you know, Airbnb or applications are $200 bucks. You know, we're considering an application fee and one of the biggest headaches is security and garbage and it doesn't cost us overtime. They maintain it, they can bring it to a central location and get rid of the garbage in their, in their containers. Like Wichitaville and Whoville, they have that other company OCD and they come in and they take the garbage away and there is some leftover that we pick up and we, and we dispose of.
And what about the residents that park there, that live there?
Is there any gonna be?
Nothing. I mean, they're on, we tell the landlords, the building owners, we ask them to notify any of their tenants that this event is happening, just like with Whoville and, and any other event that's there.
I was always under the understanding that those parking spots along those buildings are belong to those buildings, not the village.
The parking?
The front or in the back?
Those parking spots in the back.
Global basin.
Most of the parking lot in the back is us.
I agree.
Alright, there's five spots to the left of the basin that both, that were part of the deal when we had, when the village was given the right-of-way and that building was built. To the left side of the building is all basin parking lot. Anything in front of the dance studio is the dance studio. Anything.
Amadas, martellis.
That's an interesting comment, um, and hopefully we'll get an answer on it because we have a survey currently underway, which will have monuments, so we know exactly where the property lines are when we do things like this. It's always been a given that the people that live there.
Uh, well, right now we don't know.
No, nobody knows.
Alright.
Nobody knows, 'cause I've asked and I've asked for deeds and as the more you dig on these deeds, some of them are in the 18, late 1800s. Like the village owns a right-of-way in between the two buildings, that little tiny driveway, I'll call it. We have a, a village right-of-way, but the property owners own that space, but we have a right-of-way. So there, you know, so we're trying to figure that out.
So that's, you're talking about the right-of-way between?
What, East Main Street and the dance studio.
What about the right-of-way between martelli and the vacant lot, the, the amadas? The walkway right there?
That I don't know. We don't know if that part, if that driveway belongs.
Was that a right-of-way?
It was, that one, sure, it was the only way to get in.
No, no, I mean, the driveway between the two buildings, and I'm investigating that now because one of the buildings is up for sale, is that a right-of-way of, obviously for the village, because that's the driveway in, you need two egresses. That's the way in, you make your right, you're in the parking lot. There's a lot of lines, the bank did do a survey before they left, so there is a pin all the way towards the stream in the green strip that's between their parking space and the driveway of our village lot. So there is a pin there to know where you are. But this, we have a guy working on it now and he's been, I mean, literally months. And, and he keeps spinning because the more he digs, the more deeds he's finding. And he is finding it difficult, behind the soccer shop, you have amadas, you have, um, Leslie's building, which has amadas in it. And then there's an empty lot, the empty lot consists of amadas and, uh, Leslie. He owns that. At the time was the attorney's building, way back when. So he owns that lot. But where it begins and where it ends, no one really knows and that's why I wanted to have it done. So if we were ever gonna do anything from there, we know exactly where we are. And it was always a given that the rental people, based upon the owners of those buildings, like soccer shop, his people park right behind his building, right? Anybody that's above for the hook and ladder, park along the split rail fence, that's their parking spaces, that's their property. Um, everybody else, as was always described, you would park in the village parking lot. And when there's events, we ask them, you know, to park either across the street, by Maize Field, walk across, and that's what they do.
So have we ever had an event there, have we closed off all the lot?
Yeah.
They closed it, they closed it.
Yeah, yeah.
So you said the municipal lot is gonna be closed for this?
Yeah.
The whole municipal lot?
Yeah.
Are the police gonna be involved in enforcement for open container law?
Open the what?
Open container law?
Yeah, they're gonna be down there. We're not bringing anybody for the overtime, but the officers we, we have.
All the more reasons we should be charging these people.
Well, like I said, when we get there, we, our, our plan is to try to get this implemented when the new year starts, April 1st, that we'll have, we'll have those fees in place.
And who, who reached out to the other businesses to see if they were okay?
The, the management of hook and ladder, yeah, John and Sandy.
So you're saying in his work, that he reached out to everybody and was okay with it?
If they weren't, we'd hear about it.
We came, we normally come by with the flyers.
And you don't even know that.
And they, um...
It's in advertising, it's been on Facebook.
Yeah.
Not everybody's on Facebook.
By the time.
Any other questions from the board?
Just the, the, um, expected maximum, I mean, there's really no way to judge, and I think that's it.
The only way you know is when you have your first one and see, see where it goes from there. If you have 50, 60 people and people like it, then potentially you have 100 next time, who knows? You don't really know. But you just, I don't know, take a stab at it. That's why they're guessing, maybe 100.
Did they say what kind of kids' activities?
There's, um, gonna be pony rides, um, and some other games, but I can get to the games, but I won't specifically which ones.
There's no, um, rain.
No, it's rain or shine.
It's rain or shine.
Yeah, and if it's too bad, then they'll probably cancel. But there is no rain, dick, no.
I understand. No, it's, that's alright. I don't see anything that I'd like to say.
Okay. And again, this is pending, you know, receiving the insurance and all that, additional documentation. Any other questions or any comments? Okay, if not, then we'd like to take a vote, Steve? Donna?
Say yes.
And Susan? Tom, yes. Alright, thank you very much. I will speak to them tomorrow, get the additional information and I'll advise the chief as well, okay? Moving forward. Alright, onto Resolution 250032, authorize the issuance of facility use, uh, request form for the Washingtonville Little League softball practice games to be held on April 7th through July 5th, Monday through Friday at 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM at Woodfield Park. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, questions, comments?
One comment?
Comment.
There is no lighting at Hairy Park, but I have to play, so I believe that this should be till sunset, not 9:00 PM.
To be honest with you, we can change that, but being a coach that was there for many, many years, you are, if you are the last game of that particular day and it is too dark to play, you have to call the game, you know?
I understand that, I'm just saying that should be reflected in the light.
I mean, that's, whatever, we can change it, that's fine. It's just common sense, you can't see the ball, you're not gonna play ball. But, so with the revision to change that to say, be it, yeah, Monday through Friday or Saturday, the 9:00 PM will be changed to dusk? We have a motion, we have a second, any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, did you say yes, Steve? 301 absent, thank you. Resolution 250033, to authorize issuance of facility use request forms for Washingtonville Little League T-ball instructional baseball practices games to be held Tuesday and Thursday, April 15th through June 26th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at L. Vernon Park. Have a motion? Steve, second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 301 absent. Resolution 250034, to authorize issuance of public assembly permit to Washingtonville Little League for opening day parade to be held on Saturday, April 12th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM from the Washingtonville Senior High School to Maize Field. Motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 301 absent. Resolution 250035, to authorize the issuance of public assembly permit to Washingtonville Central School District for their 30th anniversary. To authorize the issuance of public assembly permit to Washingtonville Central School District for their thirtieth anniversary. Scholarship run on Saturday, April fifth, at ten A M. to eleven, eight, uh, eleven thirty A M. Have a motion? Steve, second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero one, resolution twenty-five zero zero three-six, to authorize issuance of public assembly permit for the Washingtonville. Events Committee for Rabbitville. Easter egg hunt to be held on Saturday, April twelfth, from nine A M. to four P M. at L Vernon Park. Motion?
Motion.
S P., second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
It's subject to getting insurance?
Um, it's not attached.
No. I don't have insurance online.
Let me double check mine just to make sure. Okay, with that one pending insurance and the rider. Okay? Alright, so we're just advising, revising, ladies and gentlemen, adding on to the resolution for pending insurance policy. Uh, they could, we received pretty much all of their events for the year, and maybe they did put the insurance on one of them, but. Let's just double check and we'll do it pending the insurance policy. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero zero three-seven, to authorize village clerk to solicit bill, bids regarding the Surpland Skater Project. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero one. Christine, if you could touch base with, uh, Tim Ford tomorrow morning, please? Have that conversation. Next is resolution twenty-five zero zero three-eight, to authorize the budget transfers and amendments as necessary. To effect the transfers of funds and to pay village warrants. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, second?
Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? Uh, just a couple of notables, um. Let's see. Our monthly insurance, employee benefits, hundred nine thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. We've been going through a lot of fuel, doing a lot of pro, uh, plowing and so forth, that's seven thousand, three point two fifty-nine. Uh, road salt, five thousand, fifty-eight thousand, thirty-one cents, more road salt, one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. More road salt, three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, so out of the A fund is hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Out of the water fund. There was a total of just normal, normal bills from H two O Frontier Communications. Uh, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, eighty-four cents. And then out of the sewer, let's see. Notable paying off the roof for the repairs of that was one fifty-seven, nine oh four. And then the total was one sixty-nine, zero three eight and three cents. Okay, with that being said, any other questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Bill Greer, Washingtonville Little League. Um, I have number four on the announcements, I don't think you've mentioned that one.
Which one?
Two hundred dollar public assembly fee, beginning.
Oh, we updated, we took it off, Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, nah, it's okay.
There is no, there is no fee.
Yeah, we had the new ones up here. I'm sorry?
There is no fee.
No fee right now, where, that's where I mentioned earlier, it was under discussion.
We just approved seven different public assemblies.
Yeah.
My question was, are we collecting, you know?
Yeah.
Six, six, seven occurred after the April first.
Right now, yeah. Agree.
Um, the resolution that you just passed, number thirty-two, that goes open the fourth of July weekend. Somebody didn't know if that had any conflict with the fireworks.
No, then on Friday.
On the fifth. Start again?
Cause that Woodfield, that's a resolution.
This is at Woodfield.
Thirty-two, right?
Yeah, it's at Woodfield, so we're gonna be at Vern Allen Park, that's good, huh, good catch. Yes, ma'am?
Sean Hagerty, now that spring is coming, is there any plans being made to clean out the outflows? To catch basins, retention basins, all the things that, the little league, like alleviate flooding in the village?
Well, the normal, the normal cleanup will happen as it normally does. So after, when spring finally gets here and it's dry, um, the work that we did. A lot of work that was done, I guess, a few years ago, right, they went through all the easements.
The first easement they did was done wrong, they used a claw bucket, which created a lot of problems.
Yeah, I know.
It'd be broken. And that's the main one going out, and that needs to be maintained. The culvert down at Vern Allen, if you go down there, you say the stones are to prevent water from coming out, they're not at the end of that place, they're in that drainage ditch. So the water is being blocked, and it's flowing over top. If you'd like, I'll take a walk down there with your engineer or you, and we can look at it, no, explain exactly what the problems are there.
Okay.
But it's, it's gonna get worse with the rainy season. They need to clean out the pipes underneath the two roads, they wouldn't have done the last time. We've got a ton of silt in there.
Yeah, we're working, we're working on the storm management stuff, the M S four. And that's a project and a half, so we're maintaining and doing that work, and we're also working on the sewer mains. To keep up, and we're planning the, what's supposed to happen every year is twenty percent of the storm drains or the sewer mains. Are supposed to be gated, so we're working on that as well. And just figuring out the areas so that we can create a, a spreadsheet, so we know every year where we've been. And what, and starting next year, what needs to be done.
What about the retention basin, by the beautiful viewing area on A Iron, those seats are?
Yeah.
They just get brush hogged twice a year, that hasn't been brush hogged in ten years. All you have to do is go look at the trees that are grown there, and you'll know that the garden hasn't been cut in ten years. Not massive, but about ten years old. That needs to be getting back to be done, that's a large fire load, your firemen, there's a lot of dead grass in there, a lot of dead everything in there. It needs to be cleaned up, that usually gets done twice a year.
Yeah.
And one more thing is sidewalks, the same people don't plow the sidewalks. Do they have to be told every time, or do they get fined after not doing it?
They get the violations.
What does it do, but I see Arrow Point Lane, that complex there, didn't do it again.
Yeah, well, the day that you had called, we were already out going after the Weathervein, uh, complex. Uh, we went after Saint Mary's, because their sidewalk wasn't done, there were a number, fifty-nine, sixty-one, sixty-two.
What on ninety-four, they haven't walked into the road because of two sidewalks were discussing.
Yeah, no, I, you know, we appreciate everybody advising of what they see too, because we are, we are driving around and making sure. So just for official, you have four to five hours after a snow event to clean your sidewalks and get rid of everything. If it happens between six P M. and six A M., there's a little bit, obviously, a leeway, so you can get up in the morning, do your thing. And get your, and take care of the sidewalks. If you don't do it, or the event is where it's like just recently, right? Get a little rain, glass freezes, every, every area that you walk now is like walking on Alaska. But what that really means at the end of the day is that we don't expect you to shovel it, because there's nothing to shovel. But what we expect in the law is that you are to put some type of material on the ice and snow, so it, there's some traction to it. So it be it salt, be it kitty litter, be it ash, be it something to that effect. The only thing that the law doesn't want you to put down, and I haven't quite figured it out unless it becomes slippery, is wood chips. So, um, it's there, so whatever materials you can put down to make it non-slippery, that's what we need to do. And then, and right now, that's what we need to do, because there's nobody chopping and sawing the amount of ice and, and snow. And layers of stuff that's been going on for the last few days, so.
I do know, I can tell you, Sean, because I was here, a client came in, we didn't have a phone number for the property owner. A letter was sent out that same day. Two other properties, we had phone numbers, the building inspector did call those property owners and tell them, you have to clear it, or you're gonna get a fine.
True.
But, you know, again, if you guys see something, please don't be afraid, you know, not that anybody's gonna be afraid, but just, you know, let us know. Because it just helps everybody at the end of the day, and we don't want anybody getting hurt, especially kids, and especially at two oh eight ninety-four. Yes, sir?
What happens when, if you're not home during a snowstorm, because it's last when I was not home, although I don't have a sidewalk on my.
Okay, well, you have a sidewalk here in Lake Flint.
Yeah, but I, the driveway.
Well, hopefully, maybe I have a really good neighbor with a snow blower, so.
Oh, I have one, I just wasn't home.
You weren't home, but I'm saying if some, if your neighbor, like this last event, I have a number of neighbors that are not, they were sick. One guy was in the hospital, so me and my daughter went around and we took care of four driveways. And, um, you know, ju- just, just to be neighborly and help out, maybe I did you a job. But, yeah, I mean, just try to help, you know, it's, uh, it's a neighborly thing to do. And that's, you know, people are under the weather, or whatever the situation might be. But there's always, I mean, there's some leeway in there, right at the end of the day. But if you're not, I mean, and you have a phone number for your neighbors, say, listen, I'm working, I won't be home for twelve hours. Would you mind just helping me out a little bit? It goes a long way. And my name, one of my neighbors is in the city for the whole weekend, that's her job. And so we took care of her driveway, she came home as clean as a whistle, and she was very happy and said thanks, so.
If you see any of those handicap, uh, rubbers damaged, can you please send us a picture and let us know? Because that property owner is gonna be responsible for replacing it if whoever they had cleaned them up damaged them. Those are important, because when we, we do paving and stuff to get part of our chips reimbursement. We have to prove that the handicaps were installed.
On our website, the Latin incident report, they're part of the rate department.
Yeah, and people are using that system, the I M. Care system, it's on the website, which is really, really good. Because we, uh, we do, I, I look at it, it's on my phone, and as soon as it comes across, you know, we're taking some kind of action. So it's, uh, it's good that everybody is using it. Yeah, you're, that's right, you did a good job too, you get five. Yeah, Paul?
Uh, Paul Line, ten, eight, three, eight, a couple of things, at the last meeting, I had asked when the treasurer was here and, and the board about the, uh. I know the, uh, the state recommended monthly reports, uh, but we said we were gonna do quarterly reports. At the last meeting, the treasurer stated that she did do quarterly reports during the last, and you had it in your letter that the treasurer presented to the board. And the public quarterly, I didn't wanna get into a discussion at the meeting, but I went back, and I, I haven't missed many meetings. But I went back and looked at the minutes and the videos, I didn't see four budget reports. So I'm asking tonight, can you, can we put it on a calendar tonight? That the first meeting of June twenty-five, the first meeting of September twenty-twenty-five, December twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, and February twenty-twenty-six. We have a comprehensive budget report on our calendar, so we don't miss them?
Post it.
Post it on the calendar, put it on the calendar.
Post it on the calendar, but we're gonna post it probably on our website.
Well, like I said, last year I didn't see four, she said she did four. I mean, the one she did, and, and, and they have to be comprehensive, they have to be the A fund and the F and the G.
A, G, and F.
And it has to be everything, because the last one that she gave here was just the A fund.
Right.
She had to come back two meetings later.
Right.
For the F and the G.
Right.
So, uh.
That's it, we, we had mentioned that, um, I believe at the last meeting, the meeting before, so it will, it, it will be posted.
Okay, because we, I don't think we did it last year, she said we did.
Well, last year was rather difficult, I'm not even sure.
Well, you said we did it, though.
She, when she gave, when she gave her reports, she was giving quarterly reports, when the, the times that we were doing financial updates.
Yeah.
That's when she was doing them.
And it wasn't really.
It was immediate, though.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't a quarterly report.
Okay.
Uh, in my opinion.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is, oh, we're still selling water, right?
Yes, we are.
And, and the last meeting, on the January sixth meeting, we're selling water, uh, starting January seventh, seven thirty to two thirty, Monday to Friday, and we increased the fee?
Yes.
Okay, why were they down there Saturday hauling water?
I don't know. What time did you see somebody there?
Huh?
What time did you see somebody there?
Uh, seven twelve.
Seven?
Seven twelve in the morning.
Seven twelve in the morning?
You know I got a photo, right?
I hope so, I mean, come on, you didn't forward it to us?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna file a foil, because I wanna see if that water was accounted for. You said that they were gonna be Monday to Friday, now we got, again, I go back to, and I just wanna reiterate, the insurance person's in the room. We got people that are non-employees entering the D P W. with access to the D P W. area with a key. Driving fifty-three foot, tractor trailer in there.
I'll find out, get back to Paul.
Exposes all liability, I will submit the foil, I will submit the foil to Christine tonight.
H two O, we had somebody.
I'll submit a foil to Christine tonight, I'd like to see the, because we, they have to do the vote, the photos, right of the meter?
Before and after, yeah.
Before and after, contact somebody in the water department, I'd like to see if that, that was done Saturday.
Yeah, we will do it. Yeah, there wasn't, to my knowledge, gonna be anybody there. Unless somebody from H two O. was there on Saturday doing their, their, uh.
Weekend check.
Their weekend checks.
No, this was a truck, this was a truck going.
Yeah, I know.
And the other thing is, I, I mean, after forty-five years here, every time, and I'm on a circle, a cul-de-sac, and it's, uh. When they plow, they always plow, they come down and they, you know, outside, they work their way in, not the snow in the middle. Well, this, these last two storms, they plowed ear- very early in the morning, like, you know, it was four o'clock, five o'clock in the morning. I heard them, but I didn't, I didn't see them. But they're coming right down the cul-de-sac and they're pushing up onto the, onto the property. Okay, not bad, I've got a couple of pictures of this too, but what's gonna happen with that when they do that? They're gonna knock the curbs out, one curb by me already has a chip, they chipped it. Uh, it, it's just not gonna be a good ending, I don't know why they don't, why, maybe we got a lot of new guys in the D P W.
No.
But, uh, rather than going around and pushing it into the middle, they just, and they, they hit it pretty hard. You can see that, where they hit it pretty hard, they're gonna knock the curbs out. I got all kinds of blacktop, and it creating more work, because I got four inch pieces of blacktop, four inches thick. Where they just dug them out as they were plowing, so, you know, what's, now you're creating more work, where you gotta, it's more money to repair curbing. Repair potholes that you created, so I don't know if it was somebody just different, because like I said, forty-five years, they've done it different, and then the last two storms we had.
It was a different process. Um, so what we tried to do, we had here like, um, shopping malls. And you see them on front loaders, the really wide plows? You familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I know it.
Okay, so that's what, um, we were doing. Not sure of this storm, but the, the storm you probably, whatever you're talking about is when we used it. So what they were doing to save, putting the trucks on the road to take care of the bigger roads. We were using this plow to manage and take care of the cul-de-sacs, that's why you're not seeing the snow piled up into the middle. The plow, the plow is pushing the snow.
Yeah, but it's gonna, it's gonna damage the curves, it's gonna damage the curves.
Well, I mean, if they're hitting the curbs, absolutely, I mean, they shouldn't be whacking the curb, and we'll talk to Chris tomorrow and, and, and find out what, you know, what the story is.
Yeah, you can come up and still, you can, you can see it still there, and then also, the one that they did, I take pride in cleaning my hydrant out. And then also, the one that they did, I take pride in cleaning my hydrant out in front of my house. One of the piles was very close to the, to hydrant.
Yeah.
Why are you gonna pile snow by the hydrant?
Right, that's right. You're right. Good info, we'll bring it back and talk to the guys. But that's, that's why it was looking different. Okay. You have any?
Questions, um, I know a while back, are we staying on top of, on the block with the streetlights?
Yeah.
Because I, I made the notification last year, that was the beginning of the year, they came in June, they came, they looked at it, they put some red paper on it, and left.
Around what, the hole?
Yeah, red tape is still there, light's still on.
Beauty, beauty and joy.
What, uh, what's the location?
In the block four, corner of the block.
With a red?
I submitted it three times.
It's a never-ending battle.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, we're paying a bit of life, it's not working.
Yeah, no.
No, I agree a hundred percent, that's, they need to take care of their product.
And are we switching out, are they eventually gonna switch out the lights on all L E Ds, because there's still some old lights on there?
Yeah, we've been asking for L E D, um, we've been really not getting a response. And there's actually a program out there that we're investigating, I'll call it. Where O N R is now potentially selling the light poles, and it's not the light poles, but it's the lights to the municipalities. And I'm digging in, trying to just get some information on this and see how this works. There's a number of communities that are already doing it, and some of the cost savings is they charge you for the lights, and then they also, as I understand, waiting for the documentation, but they also charge you for the maintenance of the light. So if, it sounds like if the municipality takes over the responsibility for the light, and just the light, then the maintenance fees go away. And then some municipalities have saved tens of thousands of dollars because now they're not paying. So trying to get that information from different municipalities and O N R, and there's a company spearheading it, that, you know, I guess somehow is involved in the process and is probably making money, but just trying to get the, you know, get the whole picture. But it's a pain in the rear end, we know it, we, when someone calls and they put a ticket in, if I'm not calling twice, I'm calling three times to shake them to do it. Our police department, uh, someone even on a monthly basis, when they're driving around at night, they see it, they put a list together, they send it to, um, Chris Martino. He emails the, the website to report issues, and it's just a matter of them getting out and doing it themselves, or I don't know, they subcontractors, but it, it is a ridiculous process and very slow. So, yeah, we're as frustrated as everybody else when you have to, talking about a damn light bulb, and then changing it from iridescent to a tube to an L E D. It's just a matter of, you know, them, and I'm not sure, like, you gotta feel on their dragging their feet a little bit, because they wanna be able to have the municipalities buy these, you know, buy the lights. But I understand if you do that, then everything becomes L E D. So.
One more question, um, thirty days till spring.
Yay.
Not there yet, no, I am not there yet.
Coming.
I know.
She called, I called, and we're gonna have a conversation, we have weekly calls with our attorneys. And this week, we're, I'm not sure, because Chris is on vacation.
He's on vacation this week.
So he's in the sun. And, so, I'm not sure if we can get Brian on the phone, but it's, it's a high priority, we have a number of things to get, get moving on, or get them moving on, because we're just waiting on them. Anybody else? I'm ready to move.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, three, zero, one, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Safe going home.
Stay warm. Oh, no coat?
Yeah, I got a coat.
Yeah.